All right, six o'clock was obviously in order. All members are present except for Cheryl Rick. It's gonna be a little bit late. So we'll start off with communication items.
Great. So we have a number of updates today. So we'll invite our elementary principal up. So you'll notice a little format change. So we're gonna invite Cassie back here to give us an update for the... Do you wanna come back here? If I didn't... We did a little restructuring and cleaning of the boardroom, so...
Now the camera looks at you from the front.
Now you get to see the... You went better. There you go. So, welcome. Thanks for the update. We got... We have a full page worth of updates. Lots happening over the summer at the elementary school. We hosted numerous activities and events, including community education classes, initiation Bible school, our PAWS program, our extended school year service for our students, as well as other activities. So it's been busy. And so with that, our custodial staff has worked very hard in being accommodating for the people that are in the buildings and making sure that we have clean spaces ready to go this fall. So with that being said, I just wanna give a big shout out to our custodial staff, Gary, Sandy, and Mary, and Ken, and others as well for the work that they've done this summer preparing for our big return very soon. In addition, food service has served over 3,300 breakfasts in June, July, and part of August, and over 6,000 lunches to our community, which is very exciting. And a big thank you to our food service staff for preparing breakfast and lunch each day. That is coming to an end real soon here. I believe that's the end of this week so they can get the kitchens cleaned up and turned around for the school year. So thank you to them. In addition, I want to recognize the technology department, TOTUS Tech, and Leah for their summer work preparing for the return of students and staff rolling over to the new school year. Software programs, devices. It's a big undertaking in making sure that our technology is up and ready to go for the year. Been busy hiring new staff. Not a lot this summer as compared to my previous two summers. So that's exciting. But very excited to welcome our new staff on August 20th at our new staff orientation, getting them onboard and part of the Bulldog family. Personally, this summer, spent a lot of time updating our student handbook. And you'll hear about that later on. A lot of my summer, or good chunks of the time, have been related to the handbook. And I'm excited to move forward as a district with one. So we'll share more here after a bit. I just included for the public to see the school's plan list in case anybody needs that information, as well as our back-to-school meet and greets and our conference time. Just a reminder for the elementary, our first day of school is Wednesday, not that Tuesday, just for a reminder to families as we use the Tuesday for those conferences. Our enrollment, you know, Sandy, you're in the front office, has been busy accepting registrations at the elementary. We're up to 17 over the summer. And of those 17, we have six joining our fourth grade class. And so with that increase, bring some challenges and some good conversation and discussion on how we can support our students in that grade level in particular. In particular. This summer coming up, Thursday actually, we have our ELA Training Day, ELA English Language Arts Standards, and new curriculum training for our elementary staff. So we have our benchmark advanced rep coming in to provide that training. I'll be providing some training as well as we are doing some shared sessions there. So that'll be exciting. And I just wanted to share with the board and in our community goals that I have and the elementary has for the upcoming school year. We're gonna continue to build our social-emotional learning using our Character Strong curriculum that we have in our program. It'll be our second year of implementation, which provides us an opportunity to use data to respond to student needs in the area of social-emotional learning. Again, ELA, that'll be a big undertaking for our staff, making sure that we have ongoing professional development and training throughout the school year as we are implementing our new reading curriculum, which is aligned to the Minnesota State Standards and all of our literature training. And certainly, we will be working to adjust and align to the Minnesota Read Act with... You've heard me talk about that. We've got some work to do this year to align our practices in that area. And then, of course, very important to continue to build positive and effective relationships within our school and between our school, families, and our community. I'm looking forward to year three, and I'm still surprised at how many names. I don't know quite yet, but it's a priority of mine to get to know names and families. Those are some of the goals and updates for the school year. Any questions? Is that the elementary?
Yeah, just one comment. Cassie, I really thank you for laying out as far as what your goals are that you set for yourself and then also for the school. That were absolutely fabulous. Especially let the public know what to expect from yourself. So thank you very much for doing that.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yes.
All right. And then we'll invite Jesse Rastnessen, our secondary school principal, for his first official update as... Oh, nope, yeah, you were not here in July because it was just our one, twice, our combined meeting. So welcome to the helm. Tell us what we got going at the secondary.
Thanks for having me. So it's been really fun for me to see the building. This is the first summer that I've actually been in the building every day. And I was really surprised to see how busy this building is every day and to see students around. And that's been really fun to see how busy it is. You'd be hard pressed to find a day here in the summer where the building is empty. And that's been kind of fun to see. A big shout out to our custodial staff. They have been hard at work preparing this building for the school year. So big thanks to Brad, Dave, Sandy, Stephen, and Perry for all their hard work. And another thank you to Ashley Ozendorf for all of her painting. She's been in here painting some classrooms to prepare them for our new Bulldog staff that are coming onboard here. So it's been nice to get our building up and ready to go for students to come. We're excited to welcome new staff members. We, Cassie, I touched on this, on August 20th, we have our new staff orientation. And we have some new staff members that we're adding to our teams. We're excited to bring them onboard that day and looking forward to seeing what they can do around here. Staffing, we're also looking to hire some people. We're looking for a few additional pair of professionals, a food service worker. And West Central, that is currently in the search for finding us a social worker. So that's where we're at as far as staffing and hiring goes. We just finalized student schedules today, and we released them to families today. So families now, students can get a look at their first quarter schedules today, which we're really excited about. A big thank you to Cassandra and Jackie, who helped me kind of navigate that process. Jackie has been in here meeting with juniors and seniors, and she met individually with 52 seniors and 47 of our juniors to make sure that they have schedules that'll work for them and get them the credits they need to graduate next year. So Jackie's been hard at work getting juniors and seniors ready. It's been great. So just to look at the upcoming school year ahead, we have our open house on Wednesday, August 28th, from 5:00 to 7:00. Excited to have people back in the building and excited to see families again and show off the great things we have going on here. We had been working last year to look at schedules and how we can better meet the needs of our students by kind of updating our schedules. So we're moving ahead with our five-period day. Along with that five-period day, we're also going to have English and math classes every other day for the entire year. So students don't just have them for a semester. They have English and math every year, every other day, all the way up to 10th grade. So we're excited to be able to offer that to our families. One of our big goals this next year is looking at MPSS and how we can implement MPSS successfully in the secondary school. So one of the things what we're adding is we're moving away from Bulldog time and adding on what we call lead time. And lead time is gonna be an advisory. It's an academic-focused period that'll allow us to build in interventions and MPSS framework within our secondary schedule. So we're really excited to bring that onboard and look at how we can better meet the needs of our students through MPSS. So those are the things we're excited about this year.
Any questions for Cassie?
No, but I do want to thank you, Jesse, for having a comment on getting the five... Five questions per week and how that was all figured out, building off of the block schedule. I know that, I know you're aware that there were issues or concerns, not issues, but concerns that you were able to work through that. I know Dave, you know, taking that on and kind of laid that out. But with you finishing that up and you know, as far as input, thank you so much. I think people will be very happy with that. So thank you.
It's a good day to bring it up to... We have certain people that will think we lost something or into transferred it. And right at the first meeting, we're talking about exactly what we were working on with David before all this changed. So, good job.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you so much.
Of course.
All right. And activities? What do we got going for our activities? I'm sure things are just really, really quiet.
Yeah. Practices got started today for seventh through 12th grade, cross-country, ninth through 12 volleyball and ninth through 12 football. Junior high, football and volleyball will start on the first day of school on September 3rd. Chris Wolfold's back coaching cross-country teams this year. It's our third year in a co-op with BVE. Our head football coach, Tim Patson, is back for his third year. And Nicole Humbert is, once again, leading our volleyball program as head coach. Really, really happy that we have a lot of our workers already lined up. Ron's got a couple of days working the football gate behind the baseball stadium. Some of our staff members are gonna be supervising. We got that all lined up. And we have a lot of, we have probably about 90% of it, I'd say, lined up already. So that's exciting and a relief, I would say. And really excited for our fall schedules. Gotten really good feedback with, especially with our volleyball. We have eight different dates where seventh, eighth, C-Squad, JV, and varsity are all playing at the same site. And then a ninth date where junior high plays at SOC Center. And our varsity, that'll take the third. Nine different dates where our families don't have to try to pick and choose. Junior high is going to BVE, and varsity is in Royalton. They don't have to try to pick and choose and hop in the car afterwards and race over there. So really excited about that. Hoping our conference can maybe look to go towards that going forward. Bring it up in our conference meeting on Wednesday that we have with our 80s. But we have a homecoming week towards the end of September. You know, we have another meeting before then. But just kind of looking ahead to that. We have ForeNation Monday, Cross Country Tuesday, volleyball Thursday, football Fridays. We have everything at fault that week. So we're looking forward to having our Bulldogs back in action. I had an activities meeting this past Wednesday, sorry, last Thursday in auditorium. I would guess maybe 150 people were there. So that was just an opportunity to meet some people that I haven't met before. They had a chance to grab some eligibility forms and sports physical forms. Some people had questions about where, how do they pay? And where do they pay, things like that. So I know Cassandra is always happy when I bring a basket of forms back into her so she can get them knocked out rather than waiting until practices get started or until the school year starts. So, once again, that was well received. It took just a little under an hour, about 50 minutes or so. And then just wrap up with, like, to thank all those people who did show up. You know, it's just a good chance to get some good reminders about expectations and how we need to make sure our students are getting into school first and not worried about activities first. It should be, you know, they're student athletes, right? So making sure that was a point that we made. We also, I wanna thank Scott Leiser. He was our best speaker. So I spoke for about the first 25 minutes, and then Scott spoke the last 25. He's, you don't know him. He is, he lives, actually, his dad graduated from Paynesville, but he is amateur baseball player for St. Martin. He lives in Preport. He actually came and spoke without any pay. He didn't want anything. He just wanted to donate. He's a college baseball coach at St. John's University. So he did a great job just talking about it being a good sport, whether you win or lose, and how everybody has the opportunity to control that themselves, right? So not just in the sports realm, but also being in the classroom and how to act everywhere in between too. So, yeah. Sports not getting going, there's a lot of things getting ready for... Hopefully, we can hit the ground running with everything. So, open up to any questions?
Say thank you. We're all in it, especially over the summertime. Getting ball games going. Done a great job.
All right. Thank you. All right. Welcome, Rick. Me and Chris, come on up and let's hear what's happening in community education. Right. All right. So we are, probably, our catalog came out the week of August 1st. And so we've been getting registrations that are coming in. Our next catalog will come out December 1st for our winter catalog. So we'll be looking ahead, starting to plan that soon. What I did was enclose a number of just reports that we have on ELEO. So the first two are about course participation. So this is just for summer. So our report does lay out how many students are... That take our classes. So you can see all the different classes that we have take, that we have out there. We have, you know, we host a number of rec classes and a number of... Sorry, I got distracted. The number of enrichment classes as well. So the pink ones are, they just, they were the ones that were canceled. So that tells you that how many classes were canceled or not. And we had a total of 824 registrations with 500 people unique. So a number of people take multiple classes. And then this is a similar report. This is the fiscal year. So this will have the numbers starting from, you know, July 1st to June 30th. So all the rec, all the birthday parties, all the adult enrichment classes. So at the end of that, of our fiscal year, we had 2,029 registrations, 875 unique users. So I think it was a good year as far as for programming. So we're excited about that. PAWS program. So for the summer, we had about 119 contracts. And for the upcoming fall, we're sitting at 77. So we are looking at, for school year, looking at staffing and making sure that we have enough staff to accommodate more contracts. But these are our reports. So we have for the whole fiscal year for PAWS. You can... And this one will show from July to June for 23, 24 school year. And it just shows that our wraparound care had 31 students. Our school age care averaged 70. Our summer care, it was just the June, so 71. So we're able to kind of look at those numbers and be able to, you know, track how our program is growing or not. And then the summer pause, this crosses over fiscal years. So I thought I would just do a summer pause report. And we averaged about 66 kids a day, which is similar to last year as a number of kids. We had a few days that were pushing 90 kids. So we had some big days out there. So I, kudos to my summer staff for keeping that all together and keeping kids, you know, accounted for. So I have a facilities report. We need to go and, I just wanted to show it. There's a couple of areas that I need to ask ELEO help desk on. But this will come in handy when you guys want to look at how is your facility being used? How is the high school or the PAC or the elementary school? We don't have ball fields on here, so we don't have that. But there, they'll see one that says ELEO support. That's where we have to talk with ELEO. We're not exactly sure what that means, and we can't find it in our system. But we'll be talking to them about how to make sure we're accurate. But we, I'm noticing that, you know, we're not collecting the data on how many participants. So that will be something for this next school year. We wanna know how many people are coming to your programs and how many people are using our buildings. If we, we don't have much for rentals, but it does track your data on how much rental money you can take in and then personnel as well. So it's a nice tool for, at the end of the year, just to, you know, get what it is, how your building's being used outside of the school day. Our preschool program, we're getting ready, just like everybody else, we're getting ready for the school year. We also have new, we have three new teachers. And we will have a couple of new pairs. They will all be attending the August 20th event. But we're excited for the addition of those new staff members. And then busy also at the PAC. We are cleaning some, cleaning and deep cleaning some areas. We just got done with the gym day. We just finished the gyms before volleyball started and got that scrubbed and well swept. We are also cleaning out and organizing storage, and which means we're throwing a lot of things out. We're getting some fall cleaning done here, so that's exciting. One thing that ELEO doesn't do, they don't have a very good calendar system. So we are just trying a Google Doc. And this is our, we're putting that out there. Right now, it's our open gym schedule. So it's connected to our webpage. And it just talks about, you know, our hours and how much it costs to get in for if you're not a member. And then we're trying to stay ahead on what is available. People wanna know when they could play football. Wanna know when they could be in the gyms. So we're trying this document to see if, you know, getting some feedback to see what people think about it. So we're just, we're trying that as our calendar. We have been, we have our procedures and policies put together. And so soon, you'll see a handbook or a document that will have our policies and procedures. I'm rewriting some staff's job descriptions. We're looking at upgrading or utilizing our gym assistant. It has a membership portal so that members can manage their membership online and streamlining our payment options. And then we are looking at, trying to upgrade our front desk system. It's sometimes challenging to manage a front desk when there's lots of stuff going on that's in the gyms or auditorium. And then we have members kind of weaving their way to those spaces in between. So we're working on a mobile front desk system so that might sit in front of the fitness center. It might be in front of the gyms, or it might be, you know, right in front of the door so that we can make sure we're helping members and they can find us. And some of those busy times, it's just difficult to know where my staff should stand to greet people. So we're working on that. And with that, we wanna do a POS system. So when people walk in the door and they wanna pay for open gym with a card, we can do that and not just take cash. And then we are also painting. So we are painting our back cardio room. That is happening this week. We cleaned it. It was very, very dusty. So there's a lot of satisfaction in our cleaning. We're, it's looking good. So hopefully, by school, by, actually, by next weekend, hoping we'll have it painted and the cardio machines move back into that space. And then finally, this is kind of what's next and on my... It's a big part of what are we doing coming up and working hard at. We wrote, I think I told you, we wrote a grant for our early childhood playground. And we did receive that grant from a community foundation. So now it's time to really make that big push to make sure that we can fund our dream. So I am writing an additional grant, and that's due at the end of September. We'll see if we get that. But we will be pulling our committee together at the end of this month to talk about fundraising plans. Who do we collaborate with? What groups can we work with? What events are we looking at doing? And so I'm looking forward to pulling that group together to see what it is we could work on to get to our final goal. So that is a, that's a big deal in my plate right now, so. All right. Any questions for Chris?
Just thank you for writing that grant. Congratulations on getting the grant money to help move forward. Kind of the stage, or how are you gonna plan that out? I'm excited to find out about that.
Yeah, we'll be having the gala. So we've been invited to the gala. So I have to have a presentation ready. So like I said, this is gonna be large up my plate. I really wanna make sure that we do it right and that people know what we're doing, you know, what we're trying to build, and maybe they'll join us.
Fabulous.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. All right. No legs and grounds. I know he's been sick in the summer, so let's wake him up and see what's going on.
I've been sitting at my desk.
Don't sit down on the chair.
Having donated, donated some coffee all day. So water leaks, most recent. So came in one day and heard some water dripping. And the domestic hot water tank, the manhole is leaking. So pull it out apart, drain it, 1,500 gallons. Drain it, take that down, look inside. There's an old manhole cover laying in the tank that had fallen in earlier sometime. I peel that out, and there's rust, and we clean it all out. Put it all back together about a day later, get it all, build it back up. Went home for the day, came back the next day, and the drain valve had rusted off. Drain it again. So I was real nervous about that. I did get chapel under to fix that. I actually thought the tank was leaking at the cradle, but it wasn't. Thank God, that was just following the insulation on the eve there and running out there. So, but that looked really good now. So that's fixed and I can move a lot of hot water through up the school year here. We still have a couple plug drains over at the elementary school. We're working on trying to get them knocked out. They're being difficult, so we'll get them. So we'll get through them. We did get back on the track, got some more gravel all their own on them lowest spots, and we did get some of the cracks filled. It was kind of a trial crack thing I had bought last fall. It had to be 70 degrees, and we didn't have time beginning of summer. We started getting it. It looks actually pretty good. I don't know if Rick had seen it or anybody. Any comments from them guys, whatever it may be? But I thought it looked pretty good, like a rubbery track stuff. So with all the rain, the lawns haven't stopped growing. So that's been a struggle. So fence lines have been, I had to talk to my boys about the fence lines again, making sure they're getting weed whips out and getting that out done. So that'll be cleaned up here hopefully this week. They did go down an hour's an hour football, starting, they were both football players. So they'll need a little help with our staff as well on that. So and the floors, the cleaning of the floors and polishing floors, it was going really well. And then we had a couple rooms that were really kind of difficult. There was a lot of wax on them. We're pushing through it though. It's looking like this week we will get the new wax put back down on them floors and keep moving forward. I do have the guy in the kitchen right now. So that's going well. Turned some old concrete pads. I had some concerns about the old wayside rest one out here where they cut the building down with the pipe sticking out of the ground. So we did knock that all out and all the way. And I thank Brut Stang, a shout out to him for letting us use his trailer. He has a duck trailer. And David Boss for letting us dump it in his pit. So that was nice for them guys, so let's do that. There was a little one over behind the football tower too that looked like it was an old discus or something. Throw it, it was all deep and cracked all up and we knocked that out. And we took down the old football scoreboard, dug them poles out, got them all the way. So, and we got 1,800 LED lights in the building this last week. So that was a nice to get that done. When the bulbs show up, you just look at the pallets and you're like, oh, boy. It's really nice to get that done. So we do have 300 left to go in the gym. We can't go on the gym floor yet because of the new surface on there. So we gotta wait about another two weeks so that we can get them put up to. And we're gonna have to have time in between the volleyball going on. So that'll take a little bit longer, but... So, any questions? So, thank you guys.
All right. Before we go into the handbook presentations, a couple things I'd just like to call out. I think people would be...
I think people would be surprised if they didn't know that there's a tech levy vote tomorrow, so just a reminder. Um, I do want to thank um we've had administrators and we've had staff just really spreading the word and getting communication out. And I just think it's been, um it's been a good conversation and so um. Hopefully, just fingers crossed that people are all in voting and uh we'll follow up with that in a couple of weeks. Um, and then um another, as uh Chris was talking a little bit about kind of point of sale. You know, some of the things that we've been working on over the summer are really analyzing how we're using cash and how cash is coming into the school district. And how we can really streamline some of our payment processes. Um, so it's a, it's a big task and it's a big undertaking. So we're really trying to make sure that we're, we're mindful of if community ed does something, we at the, at the district level are trying to coordinate. Um, so there's a lot of conversation of how we could use, whether it's infinite campuses or payment processing or, you know, so some work is happening there as well. So um over the course of the next couple of weeks, hopefully we'll have some updates. There won't be any dramatic change for the start of the school year by any means. But um just paying attention that we're, it's certainly something that we're talking about to try to streamline things for families as much as possible, so. All right, um and so with that, I'm going to uh walk into our handbook presentations, if that's okay. Okay, so um I will start just with our um, actually, I'm gonna turn it over to uh. I'm gonna invite Jesse and Cassie up um to kind of walk through the district handbook uh and any changes and and I guess. Board members, just a, this does look different. Um, and as Cassie alluded to and. I don't know if I don't, I don't want to spill your thunder per se, but one of the things we administratively really talked about was how can we. Um, streamline where parents can find information and make sure that it's not, you know, there's not a lot of difference between an elementary. I mean, students are students. Yes, there are big differences between elementary students, but the procedures and the guidelines are fairly similar. So I'm gonna just invite Jesse and Cassie to kind of walk through um some of the big areas and then maybe they can um share. I'll let them direct me and I'll drive as much as possible and let you guys just uh walk through the handbook conversation.
There's no one left, but I thought it was fantastic. It looks very good, easy to get around in and it looks really good. You spent a lot of time, well worth it compared to what I've seen in the past.
Sorry, go on.
True statement. It took a lot of time.
So Janelle alluded to, one of the big whys of why we wanted to do this is we had realized we had a lot of information, how was it different locations? And so we really wanted to centralize the location that parents can go to find information. And so we combined our handbooks together and came up with our, our district handbook. So that was the big, the big why behind why we moved in this direction.
And really it provided, um it was a perfect opportunity and timing to do it this year. Um, I think initially when Jesse came on board, we had that initial conversation about do we wait and just keep what we have? And then get you a year under your belt and then do it. But really, this was a great time to come together. Um, as principals and create the one, the one handbook. Um, and so we were able to spend some time. Uh researching other districts to see how are other districts utilizing a district wide handbook? What are the components that districts are using, um not using? We spent a lot of time looking at um the model handbook provided by MSBA. And so we were able to use that information um when making our decisions and then certainly falling back to our policies. What do our policies say and how can we reiterate that into our handbook? So families have access to that. Um, you'll see that we went away from making a redlined handbook to show you what we took out, what we left in. And just, this is clean, this is um in draft form, um and we'll make those adjustments after further conversation. And um I think with Jesse's expertise, he can put in some bookmarks, so it will be even easier to navigate. You press the link and it jumps right to the page. Um, so we'll do that final uh formatting here. Um, before the approval at the end of the month.
So just a little bit about the overview and the structure as you look through it. Um, you'll notice that it starts off with some general district information, kind of our, our layout and our structure of, of the district. And so you'll see stuff on school board and PBIS, so to talk a little bit more about that.
Sorry, I'm trying to get up there.
No, that's okay.
Toggling. Okay.
So there's a table of contents and then afterwards, um just kind of a general information section, some about the district, vision and mission. Um, some of the real key things about who we are as a district, we wanted to make sure that those were included. Uh, after that, there's a, there's a section on academics, uh in which we talk about all of the academic related stuff. And I'll, I'll just wait till Janelle gets there. Okay.
Um, keep going. Uh academics, uh do you want me to, there's a lot.
Yeah.
And we called out um when things are specific to the secondary or things are specific to the elementary. Um, and I think we're both kind of surprised, we have more in common, like Janelle said, than we don't. Um, so we were able to just be consistent across K twelve, which was nice.
There we go.
So then our next section is um academics and you'll see the information in this section is all um related to academic. After academics, um there's a section on rules and discipline. And then following rules and discipline, um there's a section on health and then a section on safety. And then finally, at the very end, there's a additional information section for miscellaneous information. So that's sort of the, the way we kind of, the structure of how we, how we built the handbook.
We were uh researching the model handbooks and other districts. Um, we found information that we currently do in practice. But we don't explicitly say it, or it was not in our previous handbooks. And so we were able to include that just to build that common knowledge, even though we were already doing it. But now um families, communities, members can know. Um, so it might look like a lot more. Some sections were added to it, but that was the purpose um for that one stop shop and, and having it explicitly stated there. Um, and then we just wanted to talk about maybe three highlights and then open it up to questions that you may have. Um, one thing, Jesse, I'll let you.
One of the things we wanted to make sure we included is, is because PBIS is such a big part of who we are as a district. So you'll see um right off the bat, there's a section talking about our, our two PBIS. Um, expectations in our building and, and what PBIS is. And so um that was a big thing that was added here that was important to who we are as a district.
And as we continue to build our PBIS model and align that to SCL, um Jesse and I hope to add on to this section. And um dig a little bit deeper and allow families and community to know even more than what are our anchor um behaviors that we're looking at. One thing that um I would like to update and just bring forward um pertaining mostly to elementary. The school celebrations and birthdays and it just trying to find a way to support families. In their um opportunities, getting uh their child together with other classmates, getting those birthday parties scheduled. Then get the, you know, classmates invited. And that's always a tricky situation, right? And we know there's been some changes in legislation with our directories and what information can we provide uh to families? And what can we not provide to families? And so one thing that um we will be doing starting this school year. Is providing an optional classroom directory for families to choose to be a part of. And so my daughter in fifth grade, if I choose to put her name, my name and my contact information. Then that will go to all of fifth grade. And so we'll have a fifth grade class directory of those people who opt. To choose to be a part of that. Um, that way, if I'm a new family or I, my daughter wants to have a birthday party and invite. You know, so and so, but I don't know their parents, I can look at that directory. Or if you want to schedule a play date, it gives the opportunity for families to connect with one another um by having that information. And again, I just wanted to reiterate that it is optional. Families participate in. I'm, I'm hoping families use it. Um, and so they can do their birthday invitations in that, in that um perspective. By doing that um through email or text and what have you.
I was looking, I didn't find, is in the policy, does it say anything about not giving out invitations in class?
So.
I mean, that's what you're trying to.
Get away.
Not to do.
Yeah.
Doesn't explicitly say anything about that.
Yeah, so um in the um, the opt-in, I do state it there. Uh, to use the directory information as a way to um distribute invitations. Yeah, we want to um use the outside activities um as contact outside of school.
Um, one other thing to just point out, we, we added some information on MTSS. Um, and as we continue to kind of build on that, that's another section that we want to um continue to add and get more information to our parent. But it is something that was added that wasn't in either of the previous two handbook, so um feel free to take a look at that.
So board members, I know um there's, you'll notice this is informational today. There's a lot of information in here. Um, these are in draft format, but it really is um the, the established practices. Of both buildings in one spot. And so really it was trying to streamline that or, and I think both um. When the cell phone policy was changed uh last school year, that's just been transferred in. So again, if there's anything um markedly different, um principals have tried to call that out or to share that with you. Um, but otherwise, it really has been our um, our practices that are either combined. Or spelled out, so it can be a little bit more clear for families and um found in one location, so. Um, board members, were there any questions for either of the principals?
I don't have any questions. Uh, I do want to thank both you for collaborating on this and putting this together and bringing one handbook together. Like it really shows the uh, the community as a whole that when you lead the elementary side and come into secondary school. That uh principals have worked together and, and that there is an understanding. I'm like, like going this way, Rob, I do like the fact that you didn't do a redline one, especially when you're developing a whole new document. Uh, to have an understanding, then bringing together, as, as you had mentioned, Cassie, you know, things that we've done in practice. But we've never documented, that really takes the ambiguity out of uh for say, parents, students or whomever. Of having that spelled out to, to understand that. So, so like I said, it takes ambiguity out where people aren't trying to guess. So thank you very much. This is uh, this is very impressive.
Um, one thing that I think we, we talked about as we were kind of brainstorming is, is recognizing that there are things that we will find. Um, and so, you know, please do bring that for our attention because I think, you know, as many times as you look at things, it might appear to be really clear. In our minds, but I know as you, as you come across things, please don't, don't hesitate to reach out because that's um also how we understand. If we got the message across or okay, we need to be more clear on that, so.
And I think Rick, that goes back to yours, like, oh yeah, that was in my, the directions of my inventory or directory. But I feel like that could be explicitly stated in here, sort of to take the gray away.
Well, and I think it's very important, uh, Janelle, you brought up a great point, you know, so as far as uh let's start walking this process now. And, and I know that uh, I'm sure the three of you uh through the ship training and the things that you've gone through that understand. So we've developed something now, we need to start walking it.
Oh, yeah.
And, and having, having people really take a look at it, go through it and sort of have that understanding to see where uh things could be improved, so fabulous.
Um, and then any other questions for?
I guess it's really good. When I started, these were all piece, different font, different size of. This is very clean and everything takes a process to develop, um based was it to start with? But now you have a document you can work with.
Well, and everything that we put out there that might get out to the public should look professional.
Yeah.
I mean, if we want to attract new families, it's gotta be professional. And this looks very professional, so.
Nice work.
Thank you.
Um, and I did see in the handbook, you guys can head out, I was just gonna transition over. Um, it has a link in here that wants the uh activities handbook. Um, uh Rick is gonna go through that. And then that will be linked in here as well. So Rick, why don't you come on up and tell us what's happening with extracurricular activities?
Well, it's short and sweet. We made a lot of changes last year, a lot of updates. Uh, a lot of the stuff in activities handbook is straight from the street, uh, it's from the state high school league handbook, which is about that thick. Uh, so a lot of that information is just carried over. Otherwise, uh, on page six, one. Modification I've made, I took out a bullet point right there as far as uh grading for mid-quarter and end of quarter grades and eligibility. I just was a little bit confusing, it wasn't really clear, so took out, are going to be taking that out. And then added in those two, number one, it's for uh end of quarter and the second one's for mid-quarter, so. Just added in that yellow highlighted bullet point there to help clean up the language a little bit, make it more clear. As far as eligibility goes for um students who need accommodations. And then I adjusted the start dates for all the different activities on the last few pages. And then any coaching information, contact, things like that'll be updated as coaches are hired and. It's a bull.
I know that was a, you had heavy lifting on that last year, so thank you for that.
Um. Okay. Uh, pause, Anna, go. Chris?
Yeah.
We got one for pause and we'll have you do pause right into the preschool round.
So we did the pause handbook. We did the pause handbook here, so nothing has really changed in that. Um, it, we um. We try to follow the, we follow the school policies, we want to follow, you know, those, the things that have been laid out. That expectation especially are the PBIS pieces to, you know, that, you know, school might be over, but you're still in the school building, right? So um these are really just kind of unique to, to being in childcare, just tells you how much it costs, when. You know, when, when you can be there, um what, what can you do when it's a two hour late start? If, in the winter, when it's a weather, or what do we do when it's a two hour late start when it's planned? How do, how do those all look? So they're just different bullet points for, or different points for um parents to know what they need to do. For bringing their children into childcare. Um, yeah, so that one we did, I believe was the one we did last year. And then the preschool, I didn't call it a handbook, I called it a supplement because I, you know, we uh. Preschool lives at the elementary school, we're part of, we're part of the, we're part of the team. Oh, do I have it like?
No, I, I messed up.
Okay, you're good. Um, you know, we're, we're following, you know, um our teachers are going, are working with the teachers at, at that school. We're going to in-service with the teachers. So, you know, parents, um, you know, we follow the school handbook. But then the supplement is just particular to the um, to the preschool families. And again, it just talks about what we offer, a bunch of costs, um to, well, scholarship information. Sliding fee opportunities, um ways they can, you know, they can prepay everything and take, get a five percent discount. Um, uh, talks about some financial policies and procedures and making payment and keeping up with their payments. Um. Uh, introducing the teaching staff, um transportation that we only offer to four-year-olds. Three-year-olds have to kind of find their own way, but there are some options for three-year-olds. Uh, probably the biggest thing is like school calendar. So we follow the school calendar, but um the two-hour late starts. Kind of throws a wrench in, in preschool because our, our morning classes can't meet. And last year, the two-hour late starts were kind of late, like we already set up our preschool screening and then the two-hour late starts landed in there. So we have a lot of days off. So this year, we're gonna utilize the two-hour late starts. Staff will still go and they will attend the um professional development that's available for the, in that two hours time. And then we will do early childhood screening after that. So, so then um no school for um. Uh, morning and afternoon. And we will use four of those two-hour late starts as screening dates. And then the other. And then the other two, maybe at, we will, we're going to come up with some of our own professional developments. Um, to fill, fill those days in. So um for preschool families, they have these six additional days off. Um, because of the two-hour late start. And we will, I think, knew this, well, we will be still having the wraparound care. And it will open at 10:15 on the planned two-hour late start, so that maybe some of our parents will also be able to attend. Um, those professional developments. But during two-hour late starts, we do have quite a few kids in that pause program. So. So we have to be able to accommodate that staff-wise. But that's probably the biggest one is just, you know, they have some extra days off. So.
Any questions for Chris about either of the handbooks? All right. Thank you so much. Um, and then the last document that's here for you um is our employee handbook. Um, so there's not a lot of content difference here, but I did do, so one of the things that we um realized is that. The flow was a little bit clunky and it didn't uh, the, the segments, kind of like how um. Jesse and, and Cassie were talking about having like segments of um the handbook. So um. I, again, I'm, I'm, I am all about working smarter, not harder. So I went back to my, one of my great resources in Wilmer. And I had a conversation with um their HR director and I said, what did you learn and, and what, what things have really worked well? And so I really kind of just reordered the information and then it is um linked. So district operations, we have a little bit more about the district operations. Attendance and time off, there's more information just about the basic components of attendance and time off. Your data privacy and data information, um students, staff, it's all spelled in. There is not a lot of new information in this handbook. It's just reorganized, okay? And it's a little bit cleaner to find. Um, the employee employment information, if I wanted, if I want to buy something, how do I do budget requisition? Um, what's my dress code? We're gonna go on field trips. How do I fundraise? Uh, what about my ID badge? You know, uh, those components, I will tell you, there is something new there. Because we've had a number of staff that um have asked, well, I can't find my badge, what happens? But we do charge $5 to print a replacement badge, so that's in here. Um, and then I also added in, um, let me go back up to the top. And I'll walk through this again, table of contents. Um, and then we also added a um. And where it comes to uh safety and keys, if somebody loses their keys, they need to let us know right away. And then they can replace, buy a replacement for $5. Again, kind of just some logistical items. Um, but it, it really was about trying to organize it. Um, the other piece that you'll see. Um, and I, and I'll be honest with you, I added this um, maybe this morning or um yesterday afternoon, because I forgot to link it. But um I linked in the master, or I've got a spot to link in the master agreements. Because I think that was something in the appendix that um is, is really helpful for staff. If they're going to be looking at a handbook and I'm going to reference, hey, check your master agreement, they're going to be linked in right here. Um, and the intent is to have them be live and not have to be on the intranet. Because currently our staff can log into the intranet, which is internal staff only, but they'll be able to grab the PDF and look at it anytime we look at a handbook. So um that will be updated as well. And I think that, that's another piece of feedback that I heard just as like, if we're going to reference the. The um contracts, let's just link them in. So, um, so those are, those are the pieces there. Um. Again, any changes that would be coming over the course of the year, we would track those changes. Um, but I, I wanted to hit this out for you to take a look at with a revised uh structure. Any questions about that? All right, so those are the handbooks. Again, up for draft, they'll be um, they'll be on the board agenda for approval at the end of the month. So any questions that you come, come across, please let us know. All right, should I move on to letter C? Yep, okay. So um, the city of Painesville, um, or Northland Security sent us a letter. And so I'm gonna just uh share the letter and. And really, here's, here's the bottom line. Um, when there's a tax increment financing um revision. Uh, school districts obviously are um beneficiaries of, of tax financing. So there is an obligation to share the information with school districts and then provide an opportunity for us to weigh in. On our opinion of um the request. So this letter and the attached document is really outlining a request that's going to be going to the um, to the, the committee. And uh, and it's really about the expansion of a Nelson Plastic Project. And um their application for a tax increment financing plan or a TIF plan. Um, the bottom line is this, the school district will receive the same funds that we always have. And then at the end of the financing, then we'll get our tax increase based on the value of what happens. So um they have to tell us that it would impact because they, there is a, a change in the way. Um, so their property values are obviously going to change, but we won't see any of that change until the end of that time period. So um, this is very much procedural. Um, in the, in the years past, I don't believe that Bittrix has had. Um, concerns uh with the community, um, I guess in industry bringing. Additional jobs to the community.
More tax revenue. So, so we still get a tax revenue.
In the, in the future, for sure. Yep, in the future we do. So this was here as an opportunity for you to provide feedback for me. Um, I believe that their hearing is uh the 20th. Um, I have to look at the letter again and I, forgive me, I don't have it. Right off the top of my head, but I will give them a summary that the district is in support of the project. And um we don't have any concerns if that's what the board would like me to do. Okay.
How many jobs does this school bring?
Um, I haven't had a, a conversation with them about um the specifics. Um, but I did, when um, in October, when they had their uh manufacturing tour. They talked about the expansion of why and why they're expanding in order to meet, meet their production needs. Um, but I didn't ask that specific question. Um, administrative retreat, so I just wanted to share with you. Um, so last year, I kind of shared what the administrators did over the summer. For professional development, for professional development. And I wanted to do that again this uh, this summer. Uh, so we had an opportunity to do some work with Dr. Sandra Campoff. Um, so. Uh, Dr. Campoff is, she actually lives in Mankato. Um, she's done a lot of work uh with um Olympic athletes. Uh, with um Alan Sealan from the Minnesota Vikings. She worked for the Minnesota Vikings um in their training camp. And she's done a lot of um, the, the mental grit and the fortitude for what it takes to work through. Um, the barriers that you come across on a regular, on a, just. Um. On a regular basis, looking at Olympic athletes and professional athletes. She's done um consultation for corporations, for corporate, for educators. Um, and I wanted to just share an exercise with you that she shared with us. Um, because it's really about how you start your day and it's about setting your day in a very positive. Um, proactive approach. And so her, um, this exercise is to take um one minute. And spend one minute, uh whether you're. Blow drying your hair, you're driving to, driving to work, you're um sitting having your coffee. So this would be a one, two, three-minute, four-minute exercise, okay? Um, spend one minute talking, thinking about everything that you are grateful for. What do you have to be grateful for? It might be your family members, your relationships, whatever. And we're all grateful for different things. Um, spending some time in the morning as you're preparing for your day, remembering your why and your purpose. Why do you get up every day and why do you do what you do? Why do I choose to be a superintendent? Why do I choose to lead district staff? Why do I want to be in contact with kids? Every day, come back to your why. Why do you do what you do? Set your intention. This has been one of the most powerful um. For, for me, and I shared this with our team, especially when you're coming into something that's really hard. What is something that you intend to do well during that scenario? Um, I will boldly lead my team today. Maybe I'm walking through a really hard discussion. Um, I will remain positive. I will stay on whatever your, your positive intention is. Speak it for a minute. And lastly, and this is probably one of the most powerful, talk to yourself with very powerful, positive phrasing. Our, our voices, and she talks about this too, that our voices are the loudest voices that we hear all day long. But how are we telling ourselves in a very positive way how we're going to um, what we are going to achieve? I am going to finish the five tasks that are on my desk today. I'm going to. Um, I'm going to complete my race in. I was gonna say five minutes less. I'm gonna say five seconds less. Oh, shoot. Or, but, but it's really about how you talk to yourself, okay? This is a, a four-minute priming exercise that you can set um as you come into your day. And where we really kind of brainstormed and talked about this is when, you know, at the beginning of the school year, it's kind of exciting and it's fun. But when it's hard, when it's in the heart of the winter and when we're faced with things that maybe just are. My gosh, it's been a really hard goal. How can you frame your day and start your day off? And it's, and it's about having the grit to achieve at the highest level. So I just wanted to share that with you. Um, it's something that, again, our, our administrators have been working through and I wanted to, to share it with you as well. So this book, if anyone's interested, is ten powerful practices to gain the high performance edge. Um, the staff are probably gonna be sick of hearing about that because it's been in my digital updates. So, more to come. All right. Um, and with that, I'll turn it back to you, um, Cheryl. Who never wants to? Uh, request for information roundtable?
I, I have a couple of things. Uh, I'd like that you shared the retreat that you liked, uh, with the staff. Which I find interesting with that, uh, on that grit side. This was necessarily a great thing, but many years ago, I, I heard a uh. Since Caesar, he was still alive, they talked about how he kind of talked his way out of depression that he was in. And he used some of the things that were there, you know, as far as we said you had talked about, but the big thing was is uh. I'll, I'll use it in this way, gotta paraphrase it. Uh, talk about how good you are for yourself. And uh, and that whole setting portion of it, so. Uh, if it helps since, since Caesar, then I'm sure it'll definitely be great for you guys. I have a book that you don't have to listen to him talk about, of course, he's passed with many years ago. So, but the other thing I would uh like to uh compliment uh as far as everybody. Uh, from the facility side, uh, the folks that have, have worked diligently. Build this building the way it is over the years. Uh, the leadership from you, you know, in recent years. As far as the continuing the collaboration of uh putting things together, bringing in partnerships and, and working with folks. The reason I say that is uh, the class of eighty-four had their fortieth class reunion on Saturday. And Janelle uh, uh, when asked, you know, she could give a tour to some of these folks. And we, we had some, a couple of folks that traveled back from San Diego. Another couple that had come here from uh, from Texas, El Paso, Texas area, that had not been in the area and, and quite a while. Uh, they definitely had not seen uh the PACT Center and uh were uh very interested in seeing how the school is going. And of course, I remembered it, it went in eighty-four, it's a very small section of uh what we currently have. So there was no uh. You know, the, the middle school uh was not there and uh, as Randy Schaefer and I kind of joked about where he's standing in the, at the pack area. It's right on the tennis court uh that we had here. But uh, of the ones that were able to uh attend the tour. Were extremely impressed about the, the technologies that have been brought in the collaboration. The bringing over, excuse me, bringing over as far as like the automotive lab and welding. And uh, just the equipment that was there uh that we currently have here. So uh. You know, like, I don't want to add to your workload. Uh, again, uh, the class of eighty-four, thank you for taking time out of your, your busy schedule. But if there is any uh reunions or people that want to see it, this is the place to go. To have an understanding of what this uh, the school is doing with the school district. Uh, as, as far as us here on the school board and the, the ones in the past have done to, I think. You know, this school district independent from other school districts along with, and I had uh, I had mentioned to uh. A, a couple of the folks uh about the open enrollment and the number of open enrollment students. That are coming into our district because of what uh our district offers that they can't find in their own school district. So Janelle, thank you, and the class of eighty-four, thank you.
Kind of fun for me too.
So I have a question, so, or a thought. A brochure. Do we have a brochure? So you were talking about Amy visiting with Seventeen Families looking to come. Are we giving them a brochure, an advertising brochure about our school, something that they're walking away with? Um, we talked about it a long time and I've seen some where we kind of put them together, but we're still doing a bit in handbooks and everything. How do we brag about what's in our school on a brochure? So somebody talks, stops in to tour the school, no matter what happens in the casino.
Yeah, no, right.
There was kind of a fact, because there's less to put on here. Do we have a brochure put together in a fashion that will tell them what's going on in our schools?
Um, we don't. It certainly is something that we can look at, but I'll just clarify, the seventeen families that were here registered. They're enrolled, they're starting. So they're getting the word and they're coming here. So um, but I.
And I think that's fine.
You're saying, if, if we have a, I don't know how many we'll get rid of, you know, the um. I, I printed fifty um of our, when we had our music in the park. Um, and I probably still have twenty-five. People didn't grab them like I thought they maybe would. But we have them available. So it, it's not costly for us to do. We just.
Maybe it's available on a PDF. Don't really care how it is. Just so people get it.
Yeah.
Because I personally believe that the four lanes being completed to this town are gonna cause a lot of the things. In growth that happened in London Spicer, Richmond, Cold Spring. It takes a while, but it's coming. And they can talk about all the things I've heard over the years. Yeah, the, this group doesn't mind business and this group. It doesn't make any difference.
Yeah.
The, the growth to the community is going to drive all of that. And if we have something that we can say, but where do we have it all listed that we do? Just think for a moment, how many things we have.
Yeah.
We just listened to all the stuff at all the different schools. We just listened to the stuff at, at the PACT Center. We listened to all of the things going on. Where do we have that in some sort of a fashion? To talk about it.
I assume that we were handing some documents out, there'll be some documents with a QR code on a document that leads you to.
Yeah.
Our website and brochure type of information where it's just, don't get to scan this, you know.
Have a link available to you. Yeah. Yeah, no, I, it's, it's a good point.
Just to call it advertising.
Well, we still should advertise.
Real complicated.
Yep, I agree.
Some simple ways, so they all got it. Because who are they gonna talk to when they're happy? Bunch of people that they know, there's more people coming in. That just makes it a little better. Amy could say, hey, listen, I know you're in the community, we have this PDF, you can take a look at it online if you want. Um, we can email it to you. Maybe we have a few printed copies.
Yeah, no, I think I.
And they have something in their hands. And that basically also says, we are interested in you.
Oh, I agree. That's good feedback.
About a hundred percent, but seventeen, seventeen, I'd say that's pretty good.
Pretty good.
That's over a hundred and something over the top.
Just not all at once. No, I think it, we figure it out, but yeah.
That's longer.
Anything else? Yes, we're good then.